The Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of June 24th, 2020. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. In order to meet the required social distancing protocols, we must limit the number of people inside the chambers. Staff is assisting individuals who are present and wish to testify on items on today's agenda by ensuring that each person has signed in. Staff will direct you into the chambers based on what items you are testifying on and your position on that item. Please note, we will only bring those attendees into the chambers for the agenda item they are interested in when that hearing begins. We are requiring attendees in the chambers to sit in a socially distanced manner, six feet apart from other people not in your immediate group. If there are more than 25 people attending for a particular agenda item, staff will bring additional attendees into the chamber as people testify and then leave the chambers. Once you have testified, you should exit the chambers using the doors to the right and then the next testifier can come to the microphone and begin testifying. In addition, for the added protection of all those involved, the Planning Commission will be allowing testimony on agenda items by video conference for individuals who pre-registered with the Planning Department prior to today's hearing. This testimony will be taken following the completion of the live testimony for each item based on position. Based on estimations, we are staggering the times of various hearings over several hours. These times are identified in parentheses on the agenda. We are encouraging attendees to arrive no more than 15 minutes before their scheduled hearing. Please note that an agenda item will not begin before the time posted. In the event that the allocated hearing times go quicker than estimated, there will be breaks in the hearing. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action today is final on the following agenda items. 4.1, Preliminary Plat 20002, and 5.1, Special Permit 20005. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held June 10th, 2020, as revised.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Albardre.
Jerry?
Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost? Okay. Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We now have a special presentation recognizing Commissioner Albardre. First, Shams, could you please go to the front of the podium? I would ask Jerry to go ahead and read the resolution of appreciation for Commissioner Albardre.
Okay. Resolution number PC dash 01711. Whereas Shams Albardre was appointed to the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission on August 5th, 2019, to fill an unexpired term and has resigned to pursue new opportunities involving an out-of-state relocation. Ms. Albardre has contributed 10 months of volunteer service to the Lincoln and Lancaster County community as a member of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission. And whereas during her service, Ms. Albardre contributed countless hours and diligent effort toward the implementation of the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan and Long-Range Transportation Plan, updates to the county and city zoning codes, and has reviewed over 142 development applications. Other projects and studies of major importance which came before the Planning Commission during her term include, but are not limited to, the Long-Range Transportation Plan Update and Comprehensive Plan Update, county text amendment for large-scale poultry farms, review of various redevelopment plans, and transportation improvement program and capital improvement program conformity reviews. And whereas the growth and development of Lincoln and Lancaster County benefited greatly from the dedicated service of Ms. Albardre, and whereas in recognition of her loyal and dedicated service, it is the desire of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission to express their appreciation and gratitude and to commend Shams Albardre for her dedicated volunteer service and to cause such expression of appreciation and gratitude to forever be made a part of the official records of the Planning Commission of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission that the appreciation and gratitude of all are hereby extended to Shams Albardre. In recognition of her dedicated service, important contributions to the public planning process for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County dated this 24th day of June, 2020, and signed by all of your fellow commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry.
Shams, we have a nice plaque here for you. This is on behalf of the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County. We want to thank you for your 10 months of service. This is one of those situations where we wish we had longer time with you, but we're very happy and excited for you for all the opportunities that you're facing. So that's a, it's a good thing, but we're very happy to have had you for the time that we had you at. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, and I'll keep this short. No, I'm just kidding. But I just want to say thank you all to the staff and the fellow commissioners. Thank you for their guidance and their support for the community, and I know our community's in good hands. I'm sad to go, but I know you guys are going to do amazing work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I think just to make it official, we have to entertain a motion and vote.
That is correct.
So moved, Beckyus.
Second, Joy.
Any discussion?
I would just like to thank the Commissioner for her service, and we hate to lose her to the state of Michigan, but as Director said, we are very happy for the time that we had her. So best of luck in the future and enjoy.
Thank you.
And I enjoyed sitting next to you as well.
Okay, Jerry.
Okay, Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We do not have a consent agenda today, so I will ask Jerry to call any requests for deferral received prior to this meeting.
Okay, we did receive written requests on behalf of the applicant for a two-week deferral of the following three associated agenda items. Item 4.1A, which is Annexation 20006, to annex an area southeast of southwest 56th Street and West O Street. The Associated Change of Zone 20011, from AG to H3 and AG to I1. And the Associated Preliminary Plat, which is Agenda Item 4.1C, Preliminary Plat 20002 for 55 commercial lots on property located south of West O and southwest 56th Street. This would delay the public hearing on these three applications to the July 8th, 2020 Planning Commission hearing.
I would move to approve the deferral.
Second, Edgerton. Jerry?
Okay. Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero.
Okay, so, next on the list... Oh, wait, before we jump to the next on the list, is there anyone here wanting to testify on this one today? No, okay. So we'll now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information to the clerk for distribution. There's an envelope or a manila folder right up here at the desk. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the Commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes, before I do that, I would like to note that Chair Cor indicated that individuals were able to register for teleconference. We did not have any registrants, so I just wanted to note that upfront. Okay, item 4.2 is Text Amendment 19007 to amend Articles 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 13, and 17 of the Lancaster County zoning regulations related to allowing large and small solar facilities and stating that accessory solar and wind energy conversion systems are permitted in all zoning districts. Staff recommendation is approval. Are there any expedited communications to be disclosed on this item?
No.
I don't see any.
Okay.
Rachel Jones, Planning Staff. This is an amendment to the county zoning that would allow solar facilities. These are commonly called solar farms. Currently, solar facilities are not permitted in the county, although they are permitted within city limits as well as the city's three-mile zoning jurisdiction. The facilities are proposed to be categorized as either large or small based on capacity. For both types, we are talking about those that generate off-site power, so commercial-type facilities. It is proposed that the solar facilities would be allowed by right in some zoning districts and require a special permit in those districts where additional conditions are appropriate. So the exhibit that should pop up here shows which districts would allow these and by special permit or permitted by right. As you can see, the large facilities would be allowed in the ag and I districts. They would require a special permit in the ag. And then the small facilities would be allowed in all districts, but they would require a special permit in the AGR and the R. In terms of conditions for the special permit, I'll just list the main conditions. So day and nighttime noise limits would be set for private substations associated with the facility. Erosion control, screening for adjacent non-participating residential uses, parks or schools. And just for clarification, participating properties are those having some kind of contract or agreement with the solar farm operator. So screening would be required for those properties that are considered not participating, and that would be along the property line. Setbacks, again setbacks are based on whether the property is participating or not, and decommissioning for putting the site back to its prior condition once the solar farm stops operating. And for decommissioning, that would involve posting of a surety. That could be posted within the first 15 years of operating. We did have a minor motion to amend that I neglected to bring a copy of today, but it just added some clarifications to the definitions section relative to giving some examples there. And it also just noted that the noise standards that we're talking about here apply to solar facilities, not other types of facilities having substations. So with that, I will take any questions you have.
Rachel, I just wanted to clarify that the difference between a small system and an accessory system is whether it's for off-site power versus onsite power. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct. Basically, you know, the accessory systems are just intended to serve, you know, house or building. They're not intended to generate off-site power.
And so then the small and large, that is the hundred, what, I don't remember what that is.
Hundred kilowatt is the threshold between those.
Great.
Rachel, what was the reasoning behind the 15 versus 20-foot change? Based on the maximum panel height for small systems?
Um, yeah, we reduced that over the 20 feet that's in the city, just simply because the panels, we don't expect they will exceed 15 feet in height. There should be no reason they should have to do that, so we went ahead and lowered it in the county.
Okay, and is that because of what you're seeing in the industry?
Um, yes, that's, I think that was something that someone in the industry had informed us about previously.
So if for some reason somebody has a change and wants it to go to 20, they can request a waiver?
Correct, yep. That's an important thing to note, and the county zoning, the Planning Commission or County Board can modify, waive, or add any condition for a special permit.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel, I wanted to ask a question about the property setbacks and the difference between participating and non-participating. And maybe I'm just misunderstanding, but I'm thinking about the application that came before us that was for solar use in a, within the existing regulations, and it was, so if, is participating, non-participating in terms of the contract that if it's somebody who has an agreement? So if the, if you have an agreement, maybe you're getting some sort of a financial incentive to participate, but then there's no property setback? But if you don't participate, then there would be a property setback? That's, I'm...
Yeah, the setbacks you see here are designed to basically protect those that are not involved in the project. So the idea is whether or not you have a dwelling, if you're participating, you should be able to negotiate your own preferred conditions with the operator because you have a contract with them. So for zoning purposes, we've set it at zero feet. But presumably they would...
If they're working out, then they could negotiate that within the...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Rachel, in the decommissioning section, it references a requirement to decommission to at least three foot below the existing grade. Could you describe the purpose behind that requirement?
Yeah, the, well, the purpose for removing the equipment is obviously when the solar farms finished operating, it needs to be put back to usable condition, whether it's agriculture or something else. The three foot was put in there simply because, first of all, the industry had said they shouldn't go any deeper than three feet with their equipment because they're not, you know, the footings for these panels are not very deep. And three feet should be a reasonable depth for agriculture if they use, were to go to agriculture so that it would be tillable.
Okay. Could you describe other decommissioning plans that are required in, for other uses?
For other land uses in the code?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and perhaps my manager could speak in greater detail on that, but I believe we also have decommissioning for the wind energy in the county, possibly also the city. Something similar where it talks about removing the equipment, putting the site back, and, you know, the wind energy, I can't remember if it has a certain depth that it requires, but usually the wind energy, I'm told, has like, you know, much larger footings that are less easy to remove, so there, it's a little bit different process for that.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Rachel.
I had a question about the noise restrictions. As I'm looking at the actual language of the proposed regulation, it talks about, for the purpose of determining compliance, noise levels are measured at the closest wall of, on the property that submitted the complaint. So we're assuming a neighbor's upset about some sort of noise that's coming from this substation, this privately-owned substation. So then if it's found to be in violation of the standard, it then becomes a non-conforming use?
Correct.
Can you explain a little bit about what that means and what, if, that's if it's violated, so what happens then? What's the recourse for that person?
Well, it would be through the health department. They're the ones that would enforce these.
Okay.
If I were to speculate, I would think if it was an existing condition that was there, it would become legal, illegal, non-conforming, and they would take steps to...
Remediate.
Remediate the noise, contact the operator. I know that if subsequent to the farm going in, let's say an additional dwelling came in that complained, it would be considered legal, non-conforming because it was after the fact.
Got it. So in that context, though, can you give me a sense for how close these substations would be to these farms? Just put it in context a little bit.
Well, you know, we've got setbacks built in on the side of the solar farm. There would be setbacks to whatever the adjacent property is, whether it's a house or, some of their use, they'd have setbacks as well. And in the county, you know, the setbacks are larger. I did bring... So the setbacks in the county for, you know, like an ag, an AGR, and R district, they range somewhere between, you know, 10 to 50 feet, 60 feet, depending on whether it's a side yard or a rear yard?
Sure.
Or a front yard, but, you know, taken together, it could be, you know, 100 feet, 200 feet.
So they're generally relatively close to the actual facility?
They could be, yeah. Depending on the circumstances, they could be pretty close.
Okay, okay. And then my last question is about a letter of opposition that we received. In your analysis, you mentioned that there's no specific proposal for a facility at this time. However, the letter seemed to suggest that there was some specific project that it was referring to. Could you provide some clarity on that, please?
I think that person was mainly referring to the solar farm in the city jurisdiction that was approved last year.
Understand.
I understand they opposed that, so I think that's what their letter was structured on.
Excellent, thank you.
I'm gonna talk about that. I have a question about that noise concern. So if, if for some reason, you know, it's violating the noise limits and becomes a non-conforming and it's illegal, non-conforming, do they have to shut this down until they can, you know, muffle the noise or mute the noise more, or how does that work?
That would be a question for the health department on how they handle noise complaints. I can't, I can't speak to their enforcement process. I don't think we have anyone here from health today.
Yeah, you do.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Are you able to answer that question, Gary? Yeah, that would be great.
I'm Gary Bergstrom. I'm the Air Quality Program Supervisor with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. To speak briefly on our enforcement process and how we generally handle our noise complaints, I want to say anything that we real, that we deal with relative to enforcement, we try to bring forward a compliance-oriented track. And so our first, our first actions are identify the problem, give the person in violation or the company in violation a chance to find a way to get back into compliance. You know, when we, and we do try to work really a lot with them to do that, to give them an opportunity to correct the problem before we have to move into more of an enforcement-oriented approach. And so, having spoken, having spoken to energy industry representatives on what could be done to alleviate noise from substations like this, sometimes it's just the amount of money that was spent on equipment. You know, the larger substations especially, they'll have cooling fans that will ramp up during the day when load increases, and so they may have to look at replacing their cooling banks with some quieter running equipment. There may be, you know, some other noise mitigation, sound, you know, exterior-grade sound-absorbing panels or things like that that they could deploy that would help absorb and reflect some of that noise away from a complaining property. So there's, we would try to work with them to identify that, and we also oftentimes will make referrals to work with an acoustical consultant because we do enforce noise standards, but there are definitely people in the industry much more knowledgeable on noise than us, and so we try to make that referral to really encourage them to work with someone who's an expert in the field.
So would you say that the numbers that were placed in this regulation then were a balance between, or took into consideration the industry and the amount of noise that comes as a result of what's being put in, as well as what's tolerated or what's appropriate for surrounding properties?
Right. So the noise levels that were written into, that we proposed, were based on what currently exists in the Lincoln Municipal Code for AGR zoning. The idea being there, we have, we've got the Lincoln Noise Control Ordinance, Lincoln Municipal Code 8.24. Within there, it sets specific noise standards for various types of equipment and then general noise standards for, that are based on zoning type. Ag-zoned properties, the standards are, and this is at receiving properties, there are 50 at nighttime, 75 during the day. An increase of 50 decibels up to 75 decibels is a very substantial increase, and for comparison, 75 decibels is the receiving, is also the receiving noise level for industrial property. And so what we were looking at is we don't want to allow a noise level that one would expect to receive at. And so what we were looking at is, we don't want to allow a noise level that one would expect to receive at an industrial property. So that's where we looked at the AGR noise levels. Those are fifty, again, at nighttime, sixty decibels during the day. But they would be more typical of a, like I say, again, an ag residential type setting. And so, that was, that was the source of, of the noise limits, and it's something that, relative to those noise standards, we, you know, we're familiar with enforcing them, it's, it's something that we've done quite a bit. One point I guess I would add on that is that, under Lincoln Municipal Code, which does cover the three mile zoning jurisdiction, we take those noise measurements at the receiving property line standard on our, in our ordinance. This one would be actually less restrictive, because we would be backing all the way up to the dwelling unit, providing a greater distance between, you know, for that noise to, to drop off over, over that distance.
Isn't fifty decibels like someone talking in a regular voice?
Probably pretty close to that, I would say. I, I always hesitate to try to make comparisons beca- because we all know people who are louder talkers than others, and some are quieter than others, and so it's, it's hard to make that comparison, but that's, that's one comparison that's often used, would be like a, a private conversation.
Right, okay.
Would it be accurate to say that, you know, they might put in, say, one of those big fans at the beginning, and as it ages, it could become louder as it ages, and that could maybe be why we have, you know, noise at the, later on in life than when it first started?
I, I think that could happen. Also, any kind of sort of, you know, failure or malfunction that would cause a louder noise, a bearing goes out, you know, it's something that we've dealt with. We regulate industrial air pollution sources, and so we see that, and, again, that'd be something where we would try to work with them to give them an opportunity to get back in compliance.
And I understand how you came up with the sixty and the fifty. Was any research done as to how much these, you know, facilities normally create in sound?
Not a lot. We did talk to some, some representatives locally from LES to kind of try to get a sense of, what would they expect for noise levels from a facility that would be, from a substation that would be associated with a facility that's, you know, around that hundred kilowatt threshold. You know, for them, they, you know, they have their own industry noise standards that, that they have to follow. And following those industry noise standards and best practices, as far as setbacks from their equipment to their own fence lines, they didn't seem to think that those noise standards would present any sort of challenge to them. We, you know, we would be looking at, I think, where, where you would start to run into challenges as far as just, you know, how do we properly cite this thing so that we're not creating a noise disturbance? It would be, you know, when we're talking very, very large transmission level noise, or substations, so. Generally speaking, a substation with a, associated with like a hundred kilowatt or somewhere in there shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue, should not be a problem for them to meet.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for health department right now? Any other questions for Rachel? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel, I have maybe another question for you here. I'm not sure. When it talks about the large systems, and it talks about, you know, connecting to the substation and the, and the sound requirements, it doesn't apply to, you know, governmental entities and public, but it talks about connecting to a private substation. Is it very common to have a private substation?
Yes, I believe most of the larger facilities have that as part of their operation to basically kind of process and put into a usable form the energy that gets created from the panels.
Okay, all right.
One last question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Rachel, it seems as though the majority of the I zoning district in the county is pretty limited. Are there large tracts of land that I'm not thinking of in Lancaster County that are currently zoned industrial?
No, I think you're correct. There's, there's not a lot of industrial land in the county general. I, I believe it's fairly piecemeal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else right now? So, staff and applicants are ready for testimony and support of this application.
Good afternoon. Madam Chair, Commissioners David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, six twenty-five South Fourteenth Street here in Lincoln. Mostly, really just want to thank the staff, Rachel and Steve Hendrickson, the health department, for all of their work on this. I think what they've come up with here, we, we represent many utility scale solar developers active really throughout the state of Nebraska, so we see a lot of different zoning regulations for solar. And, and I think what they've come up with here by and large is a very fair, reasonable set of regulations that developers will appreciate and be able to understand and work with. But also, as you discussed with the noise of a substation, for example, are protective of, of surrounding landowners as well. So, pretty easy testimony here, really just want to thank them for their work on this. And, you know, one comment about the opposition letter as well, you know, this is a text amendment for the entire county, right? And so what you're doing here really is you're creating opportunity. That might be a great idea to put a solar project up near the landfill, but if that's in, in the county zoning jurisdiction, without these regulations, one could not do that today. So, in a funny way, that letter sort of points out the, the need for these regulations and the benefit of them. One thing I did want to point out, and I apologize for the, the lawyer graphics here, but hopefully you'll get that on there and understand, and I got it right side up, okay. So, the screening, the, the one comment or sort of suggestion for revision here is regarding the visual screening. Most of what's in there is, is pretty reasonable, it's, it's very prescriptive, it's the number of trees per, so far, and so forth. And, and I think generally that's all okay. There is a provision in there for a waiver through the planning commission, and, and you may see that on a case-by-case basis. But one suggestion I'd have, or one request, as you move this along hopefully to the county board, is to add language there to clarify that the screening should be as necessary to protect the sensitive receptor, the home or the school or the public park. Right now, what's in there, it talks about screening the entire property line. And what I've drawn here, for example, if somebody has a house on an eighty acre parcel that is half of a quarter section, right? That parcel along its long edge is going to have a half mile property line, right, all the way across that quarter section. But in my drawing here, the, the little square thing with the driveway, that's the house, all the way at one end of the property. As written, the regulations could mean that the developer would have to screen that entire half mile property line. That's way more than is necessary to protect that homeowner. The homeowner may not even want that. It certainly would be burdensome and expensive for the developer to be planting, I think it's four trees every hundred feet for that entire distance. Again, this is something that, you know, there's, it's a case-by-case kind of a thing, every situation is different. But we do, I do request or suggest that, as you pass this forward, if you, if you should do so, that you include language in there that ties the screening to the, to the thing it's supposed to protect. Because in this example, you know, you, you have, I think, really an unintended consequence or a unintended burden on the developer that they're going to have to screen a half mile of a property line where there might not be anything on the other side of that property line for most of it than corn or soybeans. So, that, that is my one kind of suggestion or request for you on that. Just to try and address a couple of the questions that you brought up with staff. So, yes, a large-scale utility, or a large utility scale solar farm will have its own project substation, and that would be a private substation. That would then connect via probably an overhead line to the utility substation. Typically, that project substation will be more or less centrally located within the solar farm. It makes more economic sense to do so than to put it all the way at one edge where you're going to have to run connections from the solar panels, you know, a long ways away to that substation. So, the, the noise requirements that the health department has suggested, I think, are, are fine, they're reasonable. And I, I think they may really not even come into play, because that private substation, at least on a utility scale project, is likely to be kind of in the middle of the array of solar panels and probably not very close to, to a house. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Tom?
I do have a question, Mr. Levy. In your experience, Lancaster County, well, let me preface this by saying Lancaster County doesn't have a whole lot of industrial zoning-
Yeah.
-within its borders, so basically every large-scale permit that would be coming before us would be scrutinized, go through a special permitting process, what have you. Does that at all hinder the availability or the desire of people that are wanting to locate large-scale solar facilities in Lancaster County?
It's a great question, and I'll be mindful that this is the same body that would approve or consider these special permits, and, and you're all very reasonable and, and good to deal with. But, in all seriousness, yes. You know, any discretionary approval process presents risk, it presents time, it, it presents uncertainty, it presents cost. You know, as, as sort of a philosophical matter, as, as somebody who's worked as a city planner and been in land use for a long time, I think there's an argument that you make something like this a permitted use, and, and you, you have all these criteria, setbacks and so forth, and if it meets all the criteria, it can proceed. I also understand that these are large, they're, they're relatively new. Some people don't like them, I mean, it's changed, and, and so I understand why you have it as a special permit requirement. But I do think there's an argument for making it a permitted use, provided the applicant meets all of the criteria and conditions. Or to, another way to come at it would be to change your limit between large and small, and, and rather than having be a kilowatt limit, maybe it's an acreage limit. So, anything larger than five acres, let's say, has to come to the, to the planning commission. If it's smaller than five acres, you know, one could argue it's just a different type of farming. You don't tell a farmer whether they can plant corn or soybeans, you know, at five acres or something like that in the county and in an ag district, you could make an argument, I think legitimately, that a five acre change or something like that doesn't, shouldn't require a special permit. So, yeah, a couple of different ways to get at it, and yes, having, having this requirement, I guess it's, it's good for folks like me who do what I do, but it does, you know, it does add time and cost and risk to the, to an applicant's project.
Thank you.
Tracy? According to your diagram here, if the solar panels are running the whole length of that area, should it not be screened as long as solar panels are visible?
It's a good question. I, I would argue that if they're visible off in the distance, so all the way over at that edge of the, of the property line, they might be able to see them, but they would be off in the distance, whereas, you know, it's going to affect them more if they're looking straight out their window across the road at that solar panel. And, and so that's my suggestion, is some language to, you know, again, try and, try and tie the requirement and the burden on the developer to the, the core of the impact that it's having on that receptor.
Well, without having some parameter to work by, that pretty much means that we leave it as it is now and, and handle it on a case-by-case basis as these projects came forward.
You could certainly do that, and that's a fair point, and I, and I think you will see that. One thought in that regard is, you know, any of that waiver would have to come to the planning commission. Another way to do that would be to allow the planning director, for example, to grant that waiver so that the planning director and the applicant and the participating property owners, and maybe even the non-participating property owners, they don't want to be involved, but they, they interact, you know, developers want to work with property owners. And so if the developer and the property owners and the planning department all come to you and say, "We think this screening plan makes sense," that would be another way to do it, without having to also have before you officially a waiver process.
Questions?
No.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Further testimony in support of this application? Testimony in support, okay. Testimony in opposition? Any testimony in opposition? Does he have any back there? I don't think he does, does he?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Staff questions? Rachel, I have one for you. What is the thinking behind, you know, like he just mentioned, the, the screening change, any thoughts on that?
So, the way the standard is written, it would be along the entire property line of that use. I think we wouldn't want to necessarily base it on existing conditions, because it's possible the house in that example could be moved, or they could demolish it and build a house in a new location. So, it's really intended to get at that, although the property is perhaps longer, it's still all considered a residential use, and, you know, different view sheds from the house might still be affected by panels. I mean, it's a good point. He makes that in the county, there could be a pretty broad variety of lot shapes and sizes. They could be smaller residential lots, or they could be the twenty acre residential lots. So, so there is variety there, but I think, you know, with the special permit process, it can look at that, it can look at different circumstances, and kind of whether a waiver would be appropriate, and then, you know, people would have a chance to testify and speak on that. So, you know, our preference is to stick to the property line standard, just because, you know, we do need to set some standard here, with the understanding that there may be circumstances that warrant a modification.
Any other questions for Rachel?
Yeah. I'm sorry, did I interrupt something?
No.
Rachel, could you speak to a little bit, when I was reading through the proposal here, the largest question I had was in reference to the large-scale solar projects being permitted in the industrial zoning, but going through a special permitting process in, in any other zoning area. And that doesn't allow for a lot of permitted use today without going through the special permit process. And while I want to be sensitive to every application that comes before us, I also want to give a clear indication to the community that, that these are, these are facilities that we encourage. And so, how did you find that balance in, in, you know, for example, I, I think probably with the large system use in the AG zoning being special permit, I, I guess, could you give me some ideas to how you came to the concept that that should be a special permit as opposed to permitted use in the AG district, and why, why wouldn't it be necessarily permitted in the AG district?
Okay, yeah, so the way that we've structured the large versus small tried to be modeled after what the city does in their, in the city's zoning jurisdiction, that's first. Second, I think I would just say, in an industrial district, I think if you live next to that, there's an expectation that it could be really any kind of industrial use that goes in there with equipment or buildings or whatnot. The ag district, you know, I don't, I don't know that there's as much of an expectation that it could be something like a solar farm just by right, I mean, I think that with dwellings that could be around it, we saw the need for having a hearing process. that could be around it, we saw the need for having a hearing process so people could provide input, just because, you know, that the commercial activities in ag districts are limited to agriculture and not anything else.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Rachel, I have. So now that you've kind of gone through and done the county, you know, regulations for this type of situation, I know we already have them on the books for the city, do we need to go back and look at any of those for the city?
We have discussed that we would probably do that at a future point, to go back and reassess the city regulations and see if there's anything we did differently in the county that, as we get more of these solar farms, we kind of learn, worry about them and evolve with our understanding that should be made in the city as well.
Okay, last chance for questions for Rachel. Okay.
Would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Edgerton. Jerry?
Okay, Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero.
I would move that we approve the amended staff presentation and as, or as the amended.
Second, Beckius. Sorry.
Discussion.
I think that the screening, there's going to be so much variation in it that that should be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, and to try and put some parameter in there now that really may not fit in a lot of situations, I think it's better to leave it to be a waiver in the special report, or special permit, sorry.
Other comments, Tom?
I would be open to, I generally support the proposal as written. A couple of items that I would note, you know, I would be open to, if commissioners had other thoughts on screening, I would be open to, I don't have any thoughts as to what the alternative may be, but I would certainly be open to hearing other thoughts if others had any suggestions or ideas about alternatives to the screening requirement as it stands today. And then the only other thing that I would note as, as I think might be helpful, if not in the short term, at least in the long term, to a certain degree, I really view AG zoning and agricultural use as somewhat commercial, as a commercial enterprise in a certain regard, especially when we talk about row farming or row crops. You know, I think that we really don't do a whole lot to permit large-scale systems by limiting it to the industrial zoning district in the county. I wonder if we don't invite more development to occur on the large systems if we allow those permitted uses in AG zoning, especially given the setbacks and requirements as set forth by staff already into the permitted use. I wonder if those aren't enough really to allow large system installations in the AG zoning, and really clarifies the idea that, one, this is something that we encourage, and, two, these are the rules to play by, and we're not going to take you through a special permit every single time. I would be in support of looking at potentially, you know, I think probably the AG zoning district by special permit is probably the next best fit for permitted use outside of the I zoning district, and I would be interested in looking further if other commissioners wanted to as well, at potentially changing that restriction from a special permit to a permitted use.
I have several thoughts on what we're discussing here. I do believe I'm with Tom on the concept of AG being a commercial application, and with the response that we've gotten back from the county, people in general, or none thereof, is that this could be something that would be an allowed use or permitted use, and maybe we should look at that just a little bit further so that it doesn't have so many hoops to jump through. And then with the screening, what I see a lot of, and people talk about, is the reduction of trees for maximum production of acreages. So it probably depends too on screening, a road versus neighbor property, and I believe that we'll see that as a request for modification, based on the fact that the person that has production agricultural next to a solar farm is not going to want a full half-mile of trees, just from what I see every day in the country, in our rural setting. So those are my thoughts there, and again, I'd entertain more thoughts to that, but I definitely would support looking a little bit more into allowing it as a permitted use in AG zoning.
Mr. Shear?
I appreciate the comments so far, but I like kind of where we're at with how the staff has put this together with the dependence on permitting and more of a more rigorous public review process for this kind of development and activity, and I'll tell you why. I continue to think that one of the issues, primary issues that we have in our long-range planning in our county is this ongoing kind of, it's not a conflict, it's just a rub between rural agricultural use, and we hear it all the time, living, and what is all tied up with that, and development. And so for me, and I know this puts the Planning Commission and the staff in delicate situations sometimes, but I still think it's good for the public in terms of process to have a say, and to make their points known on this, on these kinds of things. So I would not be in favor of making solar installations a permitted use in the agricultural district, just because it takes away that process. I think the process is really important. Regarding the screening, I agree with Dick. Again, I think that review and the ability to waiver is a great thing. I think there will be waivers for the extent of screening that might be required or wanted with a specific application. But I look at the screening as more of a protection of the use that needs to be protected rather than screening the new development. So when we, if we have an acreage of 20 acres, whether that's farmed or not, the screening as it should come before with an application, I think should, we should have the ability to reduce it through a review process, but we shouldn't just say, start off with the ability to have it reduced. Again, I just think that process is important. So just my two cents on those items.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll share that I echo Dennis's comments, both with regard to the screening and the permitting process on the large system in the agricultural zone. I think what the staff has put together for us is very thoughtful, balances, is an appropriate balance of the property owners and those in the area. I think that the special permit process enables them to move forward, and because it is such a change in many respects, as was alluded to earlier, I think that starting with it being a special permit for large systems in the agricultural district makes a lot of sense to me, and that's what I would support.
I want to start by saying thank you to the county commissioners for having us draft this and being proactive instead of waiting until we have an application in the county and having us look at this. It makes it a lot easier for us up here to set, you know, some rules, some regulations before we're right in the thick of things. I agree with all of my commissioners, all of my commissioners, you guys are mine, all my fellow commissioners, and I see both viewpoints, but I think when we're drafting something like this and putting it into place, that this is a good start, and then we can always come back and review it, and if we want to adjust, you know, the screening, or look at, you know, making it a permitted use instead of a special permit into the ag district, that's something that we can tweak later on. So I think this is a good, good starting point. Jerry?
Okay, this is for the approval of text amendment 19007. Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero.
We are pretty much right on time, so I'm going to go ahead and go with the next item.
Okay, very good. I'll call the next two associated items together. Item 4.3A is special permit 1629J to allow for the adjustment of parking, and the associated use permit is 100E to replace office use with multifamily use and include 110 dwelling units with associated waivers, both on property generally located at South 27th and Pine Lake Road, and both have staff recommendations of conditional approval. Are there any exhortee communications to be disclosed on these items?
No.
I don't see any.
Are there any exhortee communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site?
I don't see any of those either. Mr. Hendrickson?
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. You have two applications in front of you, both of them are related. It's regarding special permit 16, and a use permit together here. Special permit is 1629. This one is J, the use permit is, use permit 100E. This is the third application that is attempting to permit residential use. Generally, what we have here is Pine Lake Road at the north side, 29th Street along the east, the area in particular where the apartments are proposed is in this area here that has zoned O3 office today. This, two previous applications for this, the first one that came through had 135 dwelling units and 23,000 square feet approximately of commercial space on the first floor. It also asked for a height waiver of up to 65 feet for five stories of apartments, and then a very specific site plan that went along with that application, and some restrictions on patios and that type of thing. That one was denied. The second application had 121 dwelling units and only asked for 50 feet in height. That application was also not approved. So this application coming before you is asking for no height waivers, so it'll follow just the permitted 35-foot of height. It has 110 dwelling units, so about 25 dwelling units less than the first application. That number of dwelling units is well within the total amount of units that might have been allowed. They could have potentially asked for up to 250 units on the site, but they're only asking for 110. Many of the waivers that are listed here are waivers that actually have to deal with the office uses or commercial uses that are already built. So really, the main ones that are in front of you that there's any consideration really regarding is, one is to allow parking to be one parking stall for every 300 square feet of commercial use regardless of use. And that really now, why it is a waiver, it is pretty much the standard now that all of our large commercial developments have followed. So this has been approved in South Point. We actually reduced the parking standard, which used to be 4.5 per thousand, down to the 1 to 300. That was done in August of 2016. Edgewood, East Park, Gateway, and most recently Harvest Hills, which is moving forward to the City Council, which is at 70th and Yankee Hill Road, all of those had the 1 to 300 regardless of use. It just pretty much reflects that in any large center like this, you have a variety of retail uses, service uses, restaurants, and rather than sitting there trying to figure out exactly how much of this or that, which really is an administrative nightmare for both the city and the applicant, and really doesn't reflect accurately that there's a mix of things going on here. Some people are going to this use and then going to the restaurant afterwards, for example, that we have found there's a lot of parking even at the 1 to 300 regardless of use. So that's pretty much a typical request. The second request is then to reduce the parking for the dwelling units from two parking stalls for every dwelling unit down to one and a half. And with that then comes a restriction that it will then now limit that 60% of those units will either be one-bedroom or studio apartments, and there'll be no three-bedroom units or larger. So what they're saying is we will reduce the amount of bedrooms, we'll have some studios in there as well, which ultimately would reduce the possibility that there might be somebody in the apartment with three cars. Now certainly a one-bedroom use could still have two adults each who have a car, and that is quite logical. But part of the reason that this has been approved in other circumstances, again, also goes to that there's a mix of uses going on. This is on the backside, really the south side of the commercial center. All of the entrances to the commercial uses are predominantly to the north. There is a small commercial building here that has parking on all sides of it, but the vast majority of it is oriented to the north. And so it's not only reflecting the reduction that there is smaller units here, but it is also reflecting that there is a mix of use, and there'll be a variety of times when that parking is available. So for those reasons, we had recommended approval of the application. I would note several of the letters that you have received have really simply questioned that they don't want apartment use here, period. And would note for you that while this is a use permit, it is not really a permit about the uses. That's one thing that we've often found here, is that we really should have named that differently in 1979. Had it been a site plan permit or something, that might have been more appropriate. But you're really not reviewing, is the use appropriate or not, like you've had with a solar facility, which is by special permit, and then you review, is it appropriate or not? Here, it is a permitted use, so the apartments are already a permitted use, that's really not what is in front of you. And again, the density is way below the amount of density. So the main item that is a little bit different, or perhaps subjective, is are those two waivers of parking appropriate? And I would think particularly based, the 1 to 300, based on our long series of precedent, that that is appropriate, as well as we're seeing more and more of the smaller units and a smaller demand for parking, particularly in an area here where you have, within six blocks, you have various schools, you have theaters, you have a whole host of various uses that you could walk or bike to. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Steve, the, so the use permit zone is O3, but the special permit zone is H4, is that correct?
Correct, yes, thank you.
Okay. And so the reason the special permit is involved is because of the change in parking as you've described, is that correct?
Correct, yes, actually, thank you. I kind of skipped over that in the presentation, but yes, they're really tied together. The line between the two was based on the original layout. This is really one integrated center, but some of it is H4, some of it is O3. The O3 is up against the residential area to the south, and partly that was the idea, is that you wouldn't want your convenience store, your 24-hour car wash, those type of uses right up against the neighborhood. So that's why you have this very thin band of O3. It allows office use, some service use, but it also allows apartments.
And so when the staff report talked about a regional center, that encompasses the entire H4, O3 area?
And it actually includes then the B5 on the other corners as well. So the regional center is really all four corners here, the greater South Point Pavilion's regional center, which includes South Reg Village here. All four- all four corners came together initially as one large regional center. Different owners, but they were all cooperating, cooperating together on the road improvements, bringing the infrastructure to the site.
And then one last question from me. There was something in the staff report or in the, in the conditioned, in the conditions that talked about revising stormwater grading and drainage plans?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about why that was necessary or what was different between what you wanted to see and what the plans were that were presented?
Well, that's an excellent question for Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. I don't believe that, given that this has been reviewed a couple of times, usually their staff will let us know if they feel like there was something really out of bounds here, but I think there was just-
That came from them, LTU?
Yes, from LTU, and I, I don't see our LTU staff here, but I can let you know.
And really, the only reason I brought it up or was, wanted to ask the question was there was one letter of opposition that talked about-
Oh, here he is.
That talked about allowing the residential to, like, tap into the new drainage plan or something like that. And so I was quite, wanted to know a little bit more about the drainage plan for the property in relation to that question from the letter.
Sure, and some of that you can ask for the applicant, because in order to get the previous applications, the developer had tried to work with the neighborhood and saying, well, I could do X, Y, and Z-
Understood.
-which are not necessarily a part of this application. But I'll have Bob address if he is aware of what the LTU comments were on the watershed.
Thanks, Steve.
Which comments are you looking for? Bob Simmering, LTU?
One of the comments in the, in the report from staff was that you wanted the applicant to go back and revise the stormwater grading and drainage plans for the property. And I was just wondering how different or what, what they showed you and how it was, how you wanted to see something different.
I think they'll need to comment on that. I don't have those details-
Okay.
-at this point.
That's it?
I did have a question in regards to traffic, so I don't know. But a lot of the opposition letters, which we kind of touched upon, did discuss traffic and concerns with traffic. Do you have any concerns or is-
We discussed this on the previous applications as well, and all of the intersections that tie into this thing have been improved with signals and turn lanes. So the improvements that are done at this point have taken into account the impact this development would have.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
Just a quick question for Steve.
Steve, as we've seen this application a couple of times before, might you remind us of the building height requirement for a dwelling versus other uses that might be able to go into the O3 zoning district?
Yes, a very good question in that this is very much a unique district. In most of the cases, our height requirement for residential use or commercial use is exactly the same. But oddly enough, in this one district, the O3, they are actually different. So if it's a dwelling use, the height limit is 35 feet. If it is a commercial use, it is 45 feet. So the office buildings could have been 45 feet tall with a sloped roof. Perhaps you could get five stories within that. More than likely, probably just four stories.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, applicant?
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Christina Melgoza with Kruger Development, and I can touch a little bit on the drainage question, especially that came in that email. So in our previous application, we had offered to the immediate abutting townhouses, who have said that they are already experiencing some drainage issues, that we would allow them to tap into a pipe that we're gonna put, going to be putting underground to help with the drainage off the apartment roof. So that would help take it away from their backyards, from their site, and get rid of, I think, some soggy-ness is what they said they've been experiencing. We also have two detention cells on site that will have to expand a little bit to make up for the capacity of us paving some additional parking, which will create, you know, more runoff versus, say, being grass.
Does that help address that?
It does, yes. Thank you. So we had said that we would continue to review that on an individual basis of the homeowners if they came and asked us about it. Traffic, I was just gonna touch on that for a second as well. In our previous applications, and I have one here too, we actually had Shimmer do a traffic study for us. If I can find it. And they had shown, previously we had incorporated commercial as well as residential into this building, but now with this application, we've completely taken off that first story of commercial and only have residential. So back during that time when they did the study, they had shown in that as well that we had plenty of traffic flow, plenty of parking already in place for those peak hours, especially going to work and coming home from work. And now with our reduced apartments from the 120 down to 110, and even I think right now, we're actually looking at about 102 in our design, we'll have more than, than enough traffic flow in open areas.
Reducing it from commercial to residential, generally there's less trips for residential than there are for commercial. Is that, would that be accurate?
According to the report that Shimmer did, they actually said that the peak PM traffic was less for residential than it would be for the commercial center. But just taking it off in general definitely lowers it down by, I think, about a good 30 trips or so.
Okay. Are you planning on these, oh, sorry, Dick?
Go ahead.
Are you planning on how many stories for just apartments now?
So just apartments, and to stay within that 35 feet requirement, we will have three stories. And I can put up a visual here for you. Which will look similar to the visuals we had before, but with one story removed.
Perfect. Thank you.
And we still feel, obviously, that this is the best use for the space. It's the only way that we can continue to keep open almost that one acre of green space between us and the neighbors, whereas if we did a commercial use, we'd have to pay over all of that with parking.
If I look closely at the picture, is that the edge of a townhouse off the left rear?
I mean, to be fair, I don't know that I see it in there, but I have one that I can put on there for you. So this kind of shows the sightline of folks directly behind in the townhouses and what they would directly be seeing. You know, even if the trees, those trees are obviously quite mature in the photo, so without them being that mature to stare, you can still see that they would be at about the same height as our third story because of the elevation difference on the site right there.
Yeah, that's gonna be my follow-up.
Other questions for the applicant?
Say, I also have Stephanie Ponce here to answer any kind of marketing questions or rate questions on what kind of apartments will be there, what more details on the building, if you have any questions of that nature. And Rick Kruger is here for historical questions.
I, these are gonna be market rates?
Correct.
Okay.
Questions?
Oh, no.
No.
Okay. All right, so we'll go on to testimony and support. Any testimony and support? Okay, testimony and opposition? Any testimony and opposition? Okay, any more staff questions?
No.
I do have one, very easy one.
Yes.
This is the last part of this use permit that is not built out.
Correct.
So after this, I mean, assuming this gets built as proposed, it's all built out.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thanks. Any other questions for staff?
No.
Okay, applicant, do you want to rebut?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll move. We close the public hearing. Beckius?
Second, Kim.
Jerry?
Okay, Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
I move, we approve special permit 1629J.
Second, Albardre.
I, this is the third time that this application, that I've seen this application from the planning commission, and the two previous times, I committed to vote for this project as the height limit waiver went away, and we got into a little lower height here. I plan on supporting this, this motion and following through with that commitment, and would like to thank Kruger Development for their work in altering their original plans. I know that's never easy and never fun, but I think that this plan here makes a lot of sense and is a compromise that I feel very comfortable going forward with, although I know it wasn't necessarily everyone's dream to begin with. So I look forward to supporting this and can't wait to see it be built, so.
Dick?
I also will be supporting it. Not only the reduction in height, I think has been important, but I actually think having the apartments there is going to provide a stronger buffer for the townhouses behind and remove some of the noise from Pine Lake and such. And I think they may find it quieter in their, in their townhomes. And having them looking at that third story, that's actually probably better than the rooftops of the commercial in front of them.
Yeah, I'm gonna support the motion too. I, I want to express my appreciation to the developer to continue working through this. I know it's been a number of years, but to, to really come to a solution that reduces the height, I think that was the sticking point in the past, the primary sticking point, and really appreciate your, your work to do this. And as Tom said, really looking forward to seeing it built. I think it'll be a great improvement.
I too will be supporting the motion, and I thank you for all your hard work, and the staff for all their hard work. I know it's hard when your neighbors are combating with you a little, and I appreciate also the effort of having the neighbors still tie into your development. After all the history, it seems like you're getting all to the right point, so thank you for that. I will be in support of the motion.
Okay, I too will support the motion. I appreciate the developer working with the neighbors. I think that's important, and I think that this will now be a good project going forward with this lower, lower height. Jerry?
Okay, this is for the conditional approval of special permit 1629J. Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero. Okay, next item is item 4.4, change of zone 20019 from AG Agricultural District to AGR Agricultural Residential District on property generally located at South 110th Street and Saltillo Road. Staff recommendation is for denial. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this item?
I don't see any.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site?
No. All right, Tom?
Tom Chaka, planning staff. So this request is for a change of zone from AG Agricultural to AGR Agriculture Residential on 102 acres. The site is located on approximately 100, south 110th and Saltillo Road. 110th is, just is on the south side of Saltillo Road. And this site is within Lincoln's three-mile zoning jurisdiction. This site was previously approved for a community unit plan to develop 10 lots with a condition to install right and left-hand turn lanes off of Saltillo Road into the development. The applicant's letter states that the change of zone is needed to develop more lots due to the cost of the turn lanes. And due to the cost of the turn lanes, it makes the project not financially feasible with only 10 lots. Speak a little bit about turn lanes. Turn lanes are a necessary part of any development along a major street. They provide a safe entry and exit from the development. And as we all know, Saltillo Road is a very busy street with a history of accidents along it. Cost of turn lanes should not be a justification for further development of the site. If development costs should not be a sufficient reason to deviate from the comprehensive plan. This site is shown to remain agriculture. There we go. This, this exhibit up here is from the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. It's showing this kind of yellow or light color. This is all future agriculture land use. This kind of orangish color would be urban residential. The light yellow is low-density residential AGR zoning. This area right here is actually within Bennett's one-mile jurisdiction, zoning jurisdiction, that little bit of yellow there. So as you can see on the future land use map, this site and a large area around it is shown to remain agriculture at least through 2040. This site is also shown in tier two for the majority of it. And tier two is an area where the city anticipates services to be around 2040 or later. Comprehensive plan also says that tier two should remain in its present use in order to provide for future development. Comprehensive plan is pretty clear on discouraging acreage development within the three-mile area unless it's already shown for acreage development on the future land use plan. Saltillo Road, getting back to Saltillo Road, it is a two-lane county road with no curb and gutter, and is classified as, as a major collector in the comprehensive plan. Based on information from LTU, 33 single-family residential lots would produce average daily trips of 330 and 33 trips at peak hour. A land, land inventory report from March 2020 identified a potential for 1,416 acreage lots in the rural area of the county. So this rural area would be outside of all the villages, one-mile zoning jurisdiction, and outside of the city's three-mile. So, and based on past building permit data, this would be a 24-year supply for acreage lots. In 2017, the city conducted an annexation study and found that there was opposition to annexing acreage developments that were near the, or near and adjacent to city limits. This experience, along with past annexations of acreages, has proven that AGR zoning and future growth areas of Lincoln is a hardship to both the city and acreage owners. If we are going to look at rezoning areas of AG to AGR that are not shown in the comprehensive plan today, that should be done in conjunction with the current comprehensive plan update that is going on, and I believe the updated comprehensive plan probably be ready sometime later next year to, to come forward. This change of zone- that is going on. And I believe the, the updated comprehensive plan probably be ready sometime later next year to, to come forward. This change of zone request is, is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The area is not shown in the future land use plan for acreage development and the site was in, within tier two. Comprehensive plan does not support acreage development within growth tiers and there is currently inadequate supply of acreage, acreage lots in the county. Does that take any, any questions?
Any questions for Tom right now?
Where does the bypass go in relationship to this property?
Right next to it. This right here is the bypass.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Here's the property in question.
And have we done anything yet to address that concept that all of that area? How that's all rezoning based on the fact that it is going to be a highly traveled area?
For now, we are still showing it to remain agriculture. I'm not aware of any changes in the updated comprehensive plan, but I don't think just due to the bypass being there doesn't necessarily mean that we would go along and strip it with either commercial or urban residential lots.
Okay, and has there been any internal discussions about that of how we're addressing, like from the city and in that three-mile zone? That bypass there yet?
I cannot answer that as I'm not actually involved with the comprehensive plan update. That's in our long-range division.
To think of what we've talked about.
I don't think we've gone there yet.
Haven't gotten there yet. We haven't got there yet?
No.
Okay.
Other questions for Tom?
No.
When this was first approved, was it approved without the conditions for improvements on Saltillo? I have trouble with that word for some reason.
No, the community unit plan for the ten lots was approved with the condition-
With the conditions.
-that they put turn lanes in.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else right now? Okay, applicant.
Hello. My name's Ron DeBoer and I'm the owner of the property there on One Hundred and Tenth of Saltillo. And I have with me Mark and Matt from Olson's Engineering if there's any questions on things. I had Tom Houston up here for me the first time when I met with you guys. I can't afford a lawyer anymore, so. So I am asking, and I want to thank you for allowing me to put this ten-acre lot together because that was my main plan. My main goal was just to get ten acres, or ten houses with one driveway at the bottom of the hill where you could see a thousand feet both ways, where there wouldn't be any, you know, danger or anything. And if you ever driven on Saltillo and you go east of Eighty-Fourth Street, you'll see it way different than it is west of Eighty-Fourth Street. The roads had been done later than what the actual Saltillo Road east of Eighty-Fourth was. So there are good shoulders, it is a safe road, and the traffic, it's probably a quarter of what it is on west of Eighty-Fourth. So I think that's the main reason why you guys gave me the permission to use it and put it at One Hundred and Tenth with, without a turning lane because ten houses is not a lot of traffic. And then after you gave me permission, fourteen days later, Pam appealed it and said she did not want any T intersections. So this would be a T intersection on Saltillo. And, and then after that, we ended up going to the city council and my lawyer suggested that we put in a turning lane at One Hundred and Twelfth. Pam wanted me to put in a turning lane at One Hundred and Tenth and a full turning lane right and left, which for ten houses does not make it so I can make money on this farm ground, which is not, it's my worst farm ground. And I'm trying to be able to make it by putting something together so that I can survive by paying taxes and still farm. So I guess my request is that you allow me to put in AGR zoning so that we are able to justify the turn lanes. And I would be willing to put in the turn lanes if I could actually put in more houses there.
Question. Are, are you done? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Am I understanding correctly, sir, that since the last time we saw you, there's been, as you stated, a lot that's happened?
Mm-hmm.
Am I correct in, in assuming here that the application that we have before us today is because of the economic burden required to install the turn lanes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. That's the only question I have.
Dick.
Can you, can you tell me what size of lots those would be then?
What size? I'm sorry, Dick.
Size of lots on the thirty-one houses.
Mark has, and I got a map here. You want to put it on for me? I don't know how to work that thing. So.
I'm not sure of the procedure if we're allowed two people up or not.
Is that okay if Mark?
If you're comfortable.
Yeah.
Hi, Mark Palmer with Olson. This is the concept. We're looking at clustering lots down on the southern portion of the property. This, this adheres to the requirements of the city council, which is the, the large turn lanes. As Ron mentioned, you all approved at One Hundred and Twelfth Street when we were here last, late last year. We went to city council. It was appealed at city council and the net result was, and that discussion, and you can, you can view it on, on video, was, there was even discussion about, boy, couldn't this be AGR to get more density? Because they, they listened to Pam Dingman that wanted all intersections to be four-way intersections. He did not want any T intersections. And so they, they wanted the, the road moved to One Hundred and Tenth Street and the turn lanes installed. And this is a situation, there's, there's a couple of things, sorry, I might just kind of expand on this. When you talk about tier one and tier two, this is tier three zoning to the west of us. This drains to, to south to Salt Creek. This property does not drain to Lincoln. It does not drain to Beale Slough. It drains to Hickman. There's, it's an anomaly on why this tier two line even exists on this property. This property, the corner, is not even in any of the growth tiers. So this is over the fifty-year plus out for development. And, and that's what makes it, that was part of, when Ron was looking at this the first time, he was losing, he was needing to dedicate right-of-way for the state of Nebraska. And this is how this process began. And this property is so far out, it drains to Hickman. It, it's not, it's not going to be economically feasible when we talk numbers for someone to bring a sewer line bucking grade across a ridge to service property that's, that's draining in the other direction. I'm kind of expanding on that a little, but here's, here's a, here's a little larger exhibit that shows. This is all tier three property. You will note the recent high school that you permitted. We can go back to those, go back to this map and it's over here. It's in the same color as Ron's property, which is outside of the growth tiers. So this is, this is, this is a unique property. This is a property that is not impeding development. It's got a bypass to the north of it, which will impede development. You won't be able to extend roads across, across highway two. It, it's kind of an anomaly and for, for Ron to do what he wants to do, it just, it just economically doesn't make sense. And, and what you're seeing in these situations is the alternative is twenty-acre tracks and just carving it up with survey deeds and creating twenty-acre tracks. It was just recently done to the south of, of Saltillo Road. And this, this AGR, or this AG special permit is becoming kind of difficult to do when you're adding so many expenses.
How big was the lot? Did you say that?
Sorry, that was kind of, I, I rambled a lot. They're three-quarters of an acre or so. But meeting, meeting the build-through requirements, which is what that is intended to do and.
What's the diagonal crosshatched area?
A gas line pipeline. I mean, that's what this, this property has it all. Forget about a railroad to the northeast, a highway, a gas pipeline running through it. And so it's, yeah.
And it drains different than everybody else. That's interesting.
Yes.
And the, the lots that are shown as an outlot to the north of the gas pipeline?
And, and quite honestly, we would have come in with more detail, but Ron had spent a lot of money the first time doing this. We looked at the AGR zoning to at least put the stake in the ground and then you could come back with, with that site plan. But what this would be, would be a clustered development in the southern property with the rest of the property remaining in an outlot that would be reserved for future development at some time that something happens. And it's gonna be a long way off.
And I was also gonna say that they predicted this to be in 2040, I think you said, or is that when it was? Possibly developed then, which I don't think it will be because of the drainage and stuff and getting the sewer lines in there. You just can't go up over the hill. It costs too much. But also in 2040, it'll be eighty years old and I won't be able to do much after that. So that's kind of why I'm trying to get this going too. And because of the beltway forcing me to get it AGR zoned is because I had to do it because I had to sell that ground to them. So, thank you.
Ron, could I follow up one more question with you, sir? The application that we have in front of us today is the result, as you said, from some additional requirements being put forth or, or unforeseen expenses. Is, is the plan that we have before us today, this application, what you want to do? Or is it, or is it what you feel like you have to do in order for it to economically work?
I wanted just ten-acre lots is all I wanted. And I wanted it without, I mean, ten, ten houses.
In a perfect world, the ten lots that you originally wanted without all of the extra stuff that has been thrown on-
Yeah.
Is what you would like to do.
Yeah, without a turning lane.
And, yeah, okay.
That's what I would like to do. I'd like to go back and do it over again and try to get it done again, but I don't know how, if I can do that or not. I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Ron, can you push that up? That Mark's got there to show the connection to Saltillo. Okay. Thank you.
So can I ask how much does a turn lane cost?
Well, Mark was, he's the one that knows more about that than I and he can give you more numbers.
We were looking at, it, it wasn't just the turn lane. It was, we were running this road out to a location here and we were fronting lots on that road immediately. We needed to build the road up to tie in to One Hundred and Tenth Street. So it was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars when it was all said and done to build the turn lanes and to extend that road up that, that was over and above what was ever planned for on the, the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions right now?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Testimony and support of this application? Need testimony and support? Testimony and opposition? No one back there? Okay. Staff questions?
Yes. Tom, could you go over the pre- I'm trying to understand where we are today. So could you go over what transpired after the previous application? The previous special permit one nine zero three eight was approved by this body and what transpired since that point in time, just so I have an accurate-
Well, um-
Picture?
So I'm just going off memory. I think what, I think what they said was pretty accurate. I do, do recall that it was appealed to city council. There was discussion of where they wanted the road to access Saltillo originally.
And it was appealed by engineer Dingman, is that correct? Okay.
And then it was, they wanted the road to access Saltillo further to the east of One Hundred and Tenth. I think county engineer and planning wanted it to line up with One Hundred and Tenth, which they're showing in their new concept plan. And then the turn lanes were made a condition. Nothing really has happened since then. They never went forward with completing their final plans and-
Right.
Basically do, I'm assuming due to the cost of, of the turn lanes. And that's, you know, why we're here today with this change of zone application.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for, for staff right now? No? Okay. Applicant rebuttal.
Just, just to clarify, this is a unique situation for Ron, as I mentioned. And I'll, we, we wanted to keep this moving versus waiting for the comprehensive plan that was, that is in the process. And I've, I've put my hand up on a number of times for various clients with properties that, that we've asked for AGR zoning or something on the comprehensive plan. And I'm oh for however many. And so I, I, the, the rationale here was that, that you all and the city council has a pretty good understanding. I mean, it was a long hearing the first time around and, and it's a pretty confusing issue. And this is just a, it's a different situation. I think that at some point during these comprehensive plan discussions, there needs to be some kind of discussion about what is, for these AG special permits, if you have an eighty or a hundred and sixty acre parcel, there is a lot of cost being added now for, for all of this infrastructure. And you're really going to get people not, not planning because those are being planned for annexation into the city through the build-through process. And so something needs to be done probably on that to, to, maybe it's an AGR light or something in the future to, to allow for some of these, the, the infrastructure to be built per what everyone wants and to get some kind of density that, that would work. But in this case, Ron's committed, he's already sold. His property was a hundred and forty acres. It's down to a hundred. He sold a hundred and two. He's sold his property or got it condemned for the, for the beltways. This one's a little ahead of everything.
Dick.
Um, Mark, on, is, are they gonna be on individual septic systems or is there a community system?
We'd be looking for a community wastewater system and then it's served by rural water. So it'd have rural water.
Thank you.
And so the, the plan that you're, that you were showing us, so you do, you have modified your plans to meet up with the existing One Hundred and Tenth Street. And then you will put in the turn lanes for-
Yes.
This increased.
Yes, this would meet all the requirements and concerns that the county engineer Pam Dingman had, which was she wanted One Hundred and Tenth Street lining up and she wanted turn lanes. And that's where we're at.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Jerry?
Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Vecchius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
I would move that we approve this development.
Oh, Tom, hold on. Tom has a-
Oh, Tom's coming up.
I, I just want everybody to be clear. We are not approving a development. We're, we're either approving or denying a change of zone.
Right.
If, if the change of zone subsequently does get approved, they would need to come back with either a new revised special permit for a community unit plan or they could come back with a preliminary plan.
Thanks for clarifying.
I will amend my motion to change or to approve the change of zone.
Second, Joy.
Discussion.
Uh, yes. If you look at this piece of ground, I, at first I was going to come in and totally support the planning department on denying it. But with it draining southeast to Hickman, it's not something- But with it draining southeast to Hickman, it's not something that's gonna be part of our drainage system moving forward. Whereas on the north side of the new Beltway, it, that land can be drained back through the Lincoln system. So that's one. Secondly, with the Beltway going through there, I don't see where single family homes of a normal subdivision are really gonna be very happy being right up against the, the Beltway. And if you look at the development west, I can't tell you the name of it, but west of 70th and north of Pine Lake Road, those are all one acre lots in there. And they were there and the city is, is very conveniently grown around them. If you look at the, we've just recently had the proposal that the neighbors all went together off of 56th and north of Pine Lake Road and showing how they're doing build-throughs on their 10 acre lots. So the 10 acre lots are far more appropriate for build-through and clustering them where this is really a difficult place to get to. And so I totally changed my mind on, on why I'm going to support this.
Dennis?
I don't know if I'll support it or not yet. I might. Because I, I think I'm, I'm tracking with Tom's previous line of questioning. I, I thought we came to a, a, a pretty logical and sound decision when we approved this. I remember that discussion and site distances on Sawtello. We were worried about the, the safety factor. And I think that we have put this applicant in catch 22. We haven't, but I think our applicant's in, in a catch 22 situation. And I'm not real thrilled about that. I don't think that's a, a great place for him to be. But I also have huge concerns about rezoning this. So I think what I'm asking is if my fellow commissioners can figure out a way to do this. And if it, if, if rezoning it is the, the, the right way to make this right, then I, I'll go there. But what, this is discussion, so can we discuss?
I'm with you Dennis, completely.
Yeah, I. Commissioner, if you'd like to expand.
No, I kind of like popped in there, but that, that's exactly where I'm at. And I started where Dick was. I intended to support the denial because I don't feel comfortable extending AGR to this area. I, for all the different things that are in our comprehensive plan, that makes sense to me. That being said, I, I, I support what the applicant's goal is, which, which we supported the first time around. And so I, I don't know what the best way to vote is. That being said, I, I hate, I'm not happy with the position that we've put the applicant in.
I concur with my fellow commissioners. First of all, I want to say I'm sorry that you're in the position that you're in currently. I don't think that this was a situation that we foresaw. When we originally approved the, the special permit. I, I'm sorry.
Was it a CUP? Is that what it was?
Oh, sorry. I apologize. Thank you. Thank you. I, I too have half a notion to approve, to vote for approval of this, other than I, I don't think it's probably what's in the best interests. And I don't think it's really at the heart of what you wanna do. I'm perfectly fine with the original plan that you had set forth. And to be frank with you, you know, we talk a lot about Sawtello, but let's be honest. There's not a hell of a lot of turn lanes along Sawtello. There just aren't. And so if we as a community really thought that those turn lanes to Sawtello were important, they'd be there. But they're not. I travel Sawtello quite a bit. You might, I think there's turn lanes, what, at 54th, 56th and. But I mean, there's, there's, there's not, there's not a heck of a lot there. I, I don't care if you have turn lanes into a 10-unit development. I think that would be fine. I think it's not the best case scenario. But if this is the alternative, I'd be more than happy to support your original plan with no turn lanes so that it's something that actually works. I don't think that what we have in front of us right now is probably the best scenario. But I'm willing to maybe vote for it if the powers that be think that the, any other alternative is better. I just, I can't, I, I, I don't wanna vote for this because I don't think it's the best case scenario. But I also feel really badly for you because I feel like you're trapped in a system that is not really very helpful to you right now. And I apologize about that, but I don't know what the heck I can do about it. But let the record show, this is a problem. This is a significant problem. And it also, I think, is a, is a really good way to reflect on, hey, if we add a whole bunch of requirements to development, sometimes that development doesn't work. And if we add a whole bunch of costs to development, sometimes you have a guy that has to come back and say, this is what I have to do for this to be economically viable. And this is what we've got now for, for someone to come back and say, this is what it takes now to be economically viable because of all the other stuff we've thrown onto you as a community, not as a planning commission. But I apologize. I don't think I can vote for what's before me right now. But that doesn't mean that I don't believe that your original proposal shouldn't go forward in some way, shape or form. And I don't know what to do to help you with that, but I don't think, for me, this is the solution.
Is that possible?
I would have, I would direct you to city staff to discuss that further. That's all.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and continue this discussion a little bit further. We do have some AGR components to the north of this site on 110 that have been recent and some as far back as 90, excuse me, 97. And that was also then pointed out that's down at Sawtello and what is that, 56th? You put down where the other AGR zone is? Anyway, so there is precedent here. And one thing that maybe if it is necessary to have turn lanes, then let's give this developer an opportunity at this location with the craziness this site has. It also, I don't know of, and maybe we can discuss a little further internally with us. Is this something that will hurt if, as the bypass is put through? Cause that'll be done in '23. And when he's, or when this developer is working on that and getting that done, you know, there still might be only four or five houses built at that point. So is giving the turn lanes because this is going to be busy? I mean, there's a bypass going in. So is this a chance for us to support development as the bypass is coming? Even though we're not quite ready for it because we're working internally with great staff and great ideas in the comp plan update, but it's just not there yet? Can we give this developer the opportunity to keep moving forward because of that? I don't know. I'd like to have a little bit more open dialogue with that, if you guys are comfortable with that.
Tracy?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, you, you aren't gonna get the original proposal back through with the county engineer opposing it other than the turn lanes. And with the turn lanes being at a, at a cost that does not make it an economically viable development. My thought was that, first of all, I was going to protect that land for city build-through on it. But I don't know what, where else in that drains back towards Hickman. But I would guess that most everything to the south and east of Sawtello also drains back to Hickman. So I think that this is a, is a opportunity to help the developer with his second plan and that it's not going to hurt build-through of the city as we move forward.
Yeah, and I, Dick, I think that's where I stand on this too, is that what, I, I understand we don't wanna do spot zoning. And I understand that we can't build out and do it in our normal way. But what is, what is the consequences if we allow, we give the opportunity to protect the roadway and have the turn lanes, but yet give the developer the cost to disperse that like we do from an infrastructure standpoint? We support our county, we support our city, and then we support our developers.
Tracy?
Yeah, go ahead.
One of the things, this is a great discussion. I really appreciate us having it. One of the things that's popping into my head is that the consequences of voting for the motion, which is to change the zone, is that in our larger, long-range planning work over the next year, in our discussions, this then becomes something that we have to account for, long range, 2040, 2050. If, if we were to, if we were to not pass the motion, then I would at a minimum, I, I think Mark talked about this and he's oh for something. But at a minimum, we, we oughta, as a planning commission and as, as, as members of the community committee, we ought to at least flag this and address it somehow and how we're dealing with the future. Because again, it, as we've all said, it goes back to, this is just a really crummy situation that's, that's occurred. I still don't know how I'm gonna vote, but I, Dick's arguments make a lot of sense. But I'm, I'm right where Tom is. I, it's not, this is, to vote yes for this is not what I would do under any other circumstance, ever. It just, it just runs against what, you know, I believe about plant, about planning. So.
I would, sorry.
I would just say I'm on the same page where everyone is pretty much torn about the decision and it puts the developer at a disadvantage. I just don't feel comfortable rezoning to AGR, especially taking into consideration the long-range plan for the city. But that doesn't do much for the developer today, right? And it's a very unfortunate situation that we've put you in. And I do hope that we continue the discussion to ensure that this doesn't happen again.
Go ahead.
May I say just a few more things? One thing that might be an opportunity so, is that as you focus on your development of your 10 to 30 lots, that is to the roadside and it still allows for where that commercial proper, there is a commercial business. If you look at, at what's sitting there on that corner site from a, a look, see there? It's an agricultural business, I'm assuming. And that could flow through so that that does become a highway district or an office district or that as long as, the challenges we've had as a commission is when people don't realize that Lincoln's gonna catch up to you. Well, I would say if you're buying a property here, you know the bypass is going in as you market it. So from the things that we've heard that has been negative about these types of developments, I'm, I think that it can be controlled from a marketing standpoint. And I feel like we've set some precedence to the north with those AGR areas. So I will be supporting this motion. And I do appreciate staff's work and I understand the spot zoning.
You, you will support the change of zone?
The change of zone. I will support the spots, or the zoning of AGR. Correct.
And I, I will probably concur with, with the commissioner as well. It is not ideal and it's not what I want to support. But on the other hand, I would like for you to be able to move forward with something.
I, I echo a lot of what Commissioner Campbell says. Or how, you know, I came into this thinking, you know, okay, I understand why staff is, you know, suggesting a denial. But as I hear about, you know, all of the uniqueness about this piece of land, the applicant really is in an unfortunate situation and there's a lot of stuff going on right in this area. It's kinda like the Bermuda Triangle or something going on here. So I think I will support the change of zone just because of all the uniqueness of this piece of property. And I, I'm really, I, I don't want to go against the comp plan. But on the other hand, I feel like, to me anyway, there's a lot of uncertainty in, as to what's gonna happen when the bypass goes in and how that's gonna affect some of these, you know, areas right here. And I, I think that that, you know, given that this was, didn't have so many complications with topography and all these other things going on, I probably would not support this. But because of, this is where it is, that's why I'm going to support it.
Any further discussion?
No ma'am. Can we, can we have Jerry call? Dick's motion was to, to.
Approve the change of zone.
From AGR to AGR.
Okay.
Are we ready to have a vote? Okay, Jerry.
Okay, this is for the approval of change of zone 20019. Albardre?
No.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to one.
That was a tough one. Okay. So, moving on to the next one.
Okay, we have about 25 minutes before we're scheduled to vote.
Oh, we have time limits?
Well, we've identified staggered time, so I.
There isn't any.
Oh, there is not.
I was gonna say, am I missing something?
I think there is a time. I think it just got, oh, keep going? Okay.
David runs from the back room.
Never mind.
I was thinking it was cookie time.
Okay. Next item is special permit 20005 to allow for an alternative to imprisonment facility with up to six persons in an existing residence on property generally located at 420 South 28th Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the city council within 14 days. And I would just note that on June 10th, 2020, the planning commission voted to close the public hearing on this application. In addition, action was taken on this application. However, because the motion failed to receive five affirmative votes, it is scheduled for action only by the planning commission today. Are there any expertake communications to be disclosed?
No.
I don't see any.
Let me share, I would approve approval of this special permit 20005.
Second, Beckyus?
Discussion.
Yeah, I, I'm very frustrated that we do not have rules in place. I, I think this is a very important program for transitional movement of the women from a prison situation to a normal life. And I support that extensively. My biggest concern is, is that, under which this application has come forward, we have no department or police or anything else that is responsible for making sure that some staff is there 24 hours a day or that any disturbances that happen. And if there's a number of disturbances that would come forward, that then we would be able to take action to remove the special permit. So I saw, I think some of those things have to be discussed before any more of these come before us because we really don't have any means. us, because we really don't have any means of rejecting this under the present rules that are in place.
I just... Please.
From our discussions that we've had before in this, I feel like we're giving an opportunity to have the special permit identifying flag areas or places. So this will give our city the ability to oversee and have at least notification of where everything is and what's going on in the city. So I will be supporting the motion based on that.
I will also be supporting the motion. I think the applicant did a very thorough job helping us understand the roles and responsibilities. In addition to that, I think, as Dick has mentioned, there needs to be some type of regulations or a pathway for us to better understand how to support applicants who come forward through this. But again, I will be supporting it, because I do feel like the applicant herself has given us the information that we requested or asked.
I had the luxury of not attending the last meeting, and so I had the luxury of viewing this online and having some additional time to think about it. And it's tough. After reviewing the testimony from the last meeting and then the comments that we've received via email, you know, I do think... I don't find that there's any more threat to the health, safety, or welfare of the community by allowing this special permit than there is, generally speaking. It appears the applicant's taking reasonable and appropriate steps and to ensure that any threats to safety or welfare are addressed in a rigorous manner and probably more rigorously addressed than found with other neighbors whose occupancy falls outside the parameter or purview of this body. The one part about living in a community is that most of the time, almost anyone can live next to you. So that's an accepted part of being in this community. And frankly, a lot of the times, who lives next to you has nothing to do with planning commission. That's not... And has nothing... The land that you use here seems appropriate. I did hear some discussions from people testifying that they thought that an alternative to imprisonment facility maybe indicated some sort of adverse material fact for a property. I don't just... I don't agree with that whatsoever or that conclusion. I do generally agree with the staff report that... or the staff's assertion that the external land use effects are not any more significant than those of a duplex. But I do find that the in-house programming probably does... The programming services that help support the transition that's taking place here to independent living, I think probably does increase the number of visitors. And I think it does also create sort of an accessory business use to a certain extent, having therapists come in, counselors come in, so on and so forth. I believe it would be a reasonable, at some point in time, to explore distancing requirements because of that, a sort of accessory business use, if you will, so that neighborhoods aren't overburdened with this type of use in their neighborhood. But that's... And I would expect some exploration, maybe, from neighborhood groups in the city to examine distancing requirements in the future, so neighborhoods aren't burdened with this, so that these types of uses don't negatively impact the intended primary use of residential in this zoning area. So... But I will support the special permit.
I apologize for having had to have left early at the last meeting. I don't know that the vote would have been any different, but I do apologize for that. I am going to support the motion. I see, as with many applications that we get, there is nothing that is within our purview that I see that makes this something that I find cause to vote against. However, as my fellow commissioners have already implied and already stated pretty clearly, there are a lot of, I don't know what I would call them, maybe loose ends on other aspects of the program, I'll call it the program. And, you know, we talked about with the solar facility, for example, there was a question about compliance, and we had an answer from the Health Department about how that... How a complaint would get handled. That compliance is just one piece of this, that there are incomplete pieces of information for us to take into account. So I do think there are a lot of things that need to be addressed, but from our planning commission responsibility, I'm going to approve it, or I'm going to vote for it.
Dick?
I would... I don't know who's in charge, but I understand group homes are under somebody to be overseeing them. I think it was the Health Department, but I'm not positive on that. And a couple of the letters that we received referred to illegal distance between existing group homes and some properties that were doing the transitional housing that did not comply with even what's there. So I do think those need to be checked into, as to whether those are, in fact, not in proper distance or zoning or whatever. So I think we owe the neighborhood that, that whoever's in charge, we ask them to check into those.
If I may piggyback on to some of Commissioner Shear's comments. I mean, keeping in mind that the text amendment with respect to the alternative to imprisonment facilities was first put into place in 2005, and that this is the first application, special permit application, that has come forward under that. And in the meantime, a new law, I believe, was put into place in the last five years about transitional housing. And so those two things, those... That time period seems to be a bit in disconnect in terms of when this... When what we can do under what was passed in 2005 was put into place, and this opportunity to understand the value of transitional housing and encourage more of that in our community. And so I feel like it... We missed an opportunity to revisit that before we had the first application put forward. With the state of the regulations right now, I will vote in favor of this.
I just want to be able to say, in terms of... I think that Nebraska State probation has really dropped the ball by not requiring rigorous licensing of their facilities. And I think it's a problem, and I think, given the look at what's going to happen here, this is going to be approved today. But if there are people who are concerned about this facility, and that may be one of their potential options for recourse. There are numerous facilities in this community that provide transitional living facilities, that provide halfway house for people coming either from incarceration, people who are in recovery, people who are working with young adults. And many of those facilities meet much more rigorous standards in terms of health, safety, licensing, and many of them are nationally accredited. So when we talk about rigor, I'm not sure that this particular program meets that level. If you're providing medical health care through Medicaid by providing therapy, that's a medical facility, and this is... We're saying that... I don't know. Sorry, I just... I... This is my profession, and I know how hard people work to do... Work with their neighbors and build relationships. I also was not here, I was sick, but I did listen to it, and I don't feel like that partnership work is happening, that people feel like this is a quality thing that's going in. But it does look... I mean, it will pass, it meets the technical definitions. And I would just say publicly that for people who would have concerns, that the recourse may be with probation or the Health Department.
I'm sure I didn't catch the last part.
The probation or talking with the Health Department about looking at these kinds of... I do think we need to look at... I absolutely believe in getting more people out of incarceration. I don't think the solution to our community problems is to lock people up. So I think that just... But I do think we need to have better standards for how we do that moving forward.
This one is tough for me, because I firmly believe, you know, what Cindy was just saying is that we do need a path for people coming out of incarceration, and we need to be supportive. But on the other hand, we heard kind of a lack, I guess, of community building within the neighborhood, and that causes me some concerns. And so... And it was unclear in our testimony when we were together last time, maybe there was some mix-up of which property they were discussing and some... It's hard for us to tell, you know, without going and looking up the police reports and all this stuff. Is the testimony accurate, is it not, that kind of stuff? I also firmly believe that this is a type of use that needs to be studied a little bit more to make sure, you know, there has been a lot of time that has passed between the text amendment and now where we're at today with our environment. And so I hope that maybe we can go and look at that text amendment and maybe make some clarifications that need to be done. And with that, I think, Jerry, we're ready.
Okay, this is for the conditional approval of special permit 20005. And this is final action on this item unless appealed to the city council within fourteen days. Albardre?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
No.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Cor?
No.
Motion carried, six to two.
All right. For anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda, this has been suspended until further notice, and I would entertain a motion.
Joy, second.
Jerry.
Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero.
And we're adjourned.